Thank you for that. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the role, please?
Certainly Commissioner O'Con.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Eganberger.
Here.
Commissioner Attaria.
Here.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Zuber here and Chairman Green.
I am here.
And we are absent, we are missing Commissioner Graham Hudek and Commissioner Perkins.
And of course, we have our planning staff. Welcome to Jeff and Patrick and welcome to you all here and welcome to those who will be watching ultimately at home. Tonight, we have a healthy agenda of five items, two of which are public hearings. Public hearings are great for the audience, sometimes not so great for the panel up here, but we withstand. But what it does is gives you the opportunity to speak about a project pro or con at the podium and give us your opinion in questions to the project sponsors. So, we're going to be doing that a couple of times tonight. Before we get to that, however, we have minutes from our June 17 meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Okay. Do we have any later additions to the agenda?
Uh, sir.
Okay, anything from the commission? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of accepting tonight's agenda as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. The first item tonight, again, it is a public hearing. We do ask, if you do get up, to speak into the mic at the podium because they are recording this and we want to hear every valuable word. But you also need to fill out a form that they have up there at the podium and give it to staff so that they know who was speaking and give your name and address. That's all we ask and then you can give your opinions on the project. The first agenda item is the Redwood Marketplace of America Conditional Rezoning. We are considering a conditional rezoning for property located north of Michigan Avenue and by Morton Taylor, near the Morton Taylor Trailhead. Jeff, could you explain what's going on with this project and what a conditional zoning is all about?
Hey, yeah, this is approximately 63 acres. The property is located in the north side of Michigan Avenue, east and west of Morton Taylor Road by Marketplace of America. This was zoned a long time ago to C3 and we had proposals in the past for some commercial development on here that never ever took place. A couple of years ago, we changed the master plan, designated this area mixed use, which allows some flexibility in zoning. In this particular area, the mixed use designation requires, if they apply for R6 zoning, it has to be part of a mixed use development. So, as part of this proposal, they're doing this by conditional rezoning, by dividing up the property, rezoning the north part, as you can see, in the cross-tashed area to either side of Morton Taylor, from C3 to R6, and retaining the area along the frontage of Michigan Avenue as C3 as part of the overall rezoning application. The conditional rezoning along is unlike a planned development. This is something that they proposed. There's a conceptual plan, which we'll show in a few minutes, but then they have a statement of conditions, voluntary statement of conditions that they're willing to enter into, which would restrict the property in certain ways, you know, based on those restrictions and the conceptual plan. So, conditional rezoning is a zoning which you, that has a plan associated with it, that makes it a condition of the rezoning, which is unusual because standard rezonings, you don't see a plan with it. So, this one, basically, they're voluntarily restricting the property with the plan and the statement of conditions. As I said before, the request would change the zoning of 48 acres to the north side to R6, which will allow for attached residential apartments or condominiums, and the 14.6 acres that remain along Michigan Avenue would accommodate up to 66,550 square feet of commercial use, based on what's shown on the conceptual plan. So, the entire property, including the R6 and C3, is subject to the conditional zoning agreement and statement of conditions. They're integrating the two uses via vehicular and pedestrian connections in order to meet the mixed use policies of our comprehensive plan. So, the statement of conditions also restricts the uses in both the R6 and 3C districts. They've eliminated certain uses that would normally be able to be considered in those districts. You can look at the list of things that they don't want to do on the property. It includes an offer to pave Morton Taylor Road, providing a landscape berm along Morton Taylor Road, along with sidewalks along both sides of the road, provides for internal pedestrian connections to connect the residential and commercial areas, so it's walkable as a method of integrating the uses, so that the R6, when developed, is not exclusive from the commercial. So, part of the issue here is, you know, there's a developer involved and that's the Redwood Group that wants to buy the R6 portion. Marketplace of America will retain the commercial portion of it and we don't know exactly, you know, when the commercial will come in. We know that Redwood's ready to move ahead with the residential portion. But the conditional zoning agreement is good for two years. In this particular agreement, they are proposing to come in and implement some of the guidelines via a plan development agreement. We use that tool to basically extend the agreement and provide some flexibility in some of the development standards, you know, that'll be subject to a later public hearing if the Planning Commission and the Township Board approve the zoning application. So, we have Tyler Tennant and representatives from Redwood Management here to talk about their proposal. I'll let them go into detail. I'll bring up the plan. They can come to the podium and kind of go through what their proposal is and what their voluntary conditions are proposed to be. So, I'll turn it over to Tyler.
Alright, thank you Jeff. And while they are coming up to the podium, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Support.
Alright, got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner O'Con. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome.
Thank you. Can I fill this out later, so you're not?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I'm Kelly Maciver. I'm a Vice President of Acquisitions with Redwood. Thank you for hearing our application. We are really excited about this piece of land. I know we've got Tyler here, who's our attorney, our engineer here can answer some of the site constraint questions, and then our seller is here, as well as seller's representative. And they can talk a little bit more about the history and what, how they've tried to utilize the property and how we can be a solution for a piece of land that's at a great place in the township but has remained undeveloped for quite some time. I know you probably all know who Redwood is. We have a property on Hagerty Road, enclave at Brownstone. It is one of the jewels in the Redwood crown. It is a beautiful community for us. It is a high-renting community for us. Like 98% of our portfolio, it is completely rented out all the time. There's a huge demand, not only in Canton for apartments, which I know there are, I know you've got multi-story going up in several different places, but what's unique about us and what creates the demand for our product is that one product that we built, the two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car attached garage with a driveway that fits two cars and a patio on the back. You know, it's basically a home replacement, single story, no one above you, no one beneath you, and oftentimes, no one on either side of you. Most of our residents across the portfolio, about 70% of our residents are empty nesters. The average age of our residents is 53, so you'll find people on either side of that. But what we provide for townships is an opportunity for their residents to age in place. Most of our residents come from within a three-mile radius of the community, so they're looking for a place to downsize. We're not assisted living. We're not age restricted. We are FHA compliant in all our rental practices, but we do provide that, that sort of step-down living for someone who's looking to get out of a big house, but not quite ready for the next step. We're also great for people who want to move their parents near them. The 30% of our portfolio that aren't empty nesters are generally young professionals, a lot of people with odd sleep hours, right? Because one thing we offer is peace, quiet, and comfort. So, you'll see a lot of nurses, doctors, emergency personnel living in our communities, near airports, a lot of airport personnel. So, we can talk a little bit about our site plan here. The reason we offer the conditional rezoning is for two reasons. One, we don't really fit into, well, we met with staff and staff was not excited about not following the master plan, the future land use, which was mixed use. And staff sort of provided the pathway for us to make this application, which is to provide it as mixed use. Leave the bottom commercial, take the top residential, and then create this interconnectivity. And then the site constraints here, there's a drain going through it, there's some pristine wetlands in the middle that we've avoided, there's the River Rouge up the top, there's the bissection down the middle of Canton, of Morton Taylor. This provided Redwood with really interesting opportunity, because normally, we just build racetrack and if we can get six to eight units in a row, 10 sometimes, that's our sweet spot, right? Because it's easy to build and it's efficient. So, we can keep the rents a little lower for people who are looking to, you know, understand, you know, what their, what their living costs are going to be as they downsize. But, this is not a site that really lent us, lent itself to what we usually do. So, it was actually a really exciting opportunity for us to put a little more curvature in some of the roads, leave some of that open space alone, create these sidewalks throughout that connect the commercial to the residential, lots of walking, little pocket parks throughout, just a really exciting opportunity for us. At the same time, you've got north of that little, the east section, kind of that P there, north of that, there's a sort of an area that's got some wetlands and a park area, and then of course, you know, the trailhead over this area as well. And one of the things we can do here, that's an amenity for us as well as for Canton, is to finish out that Morton Taylor Road all the way back, finish it, walking trails on either side, dedicate it to the county, and now there's connection to that trailhead up there. So, this for us is just a really exciting project. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about it. I know Tyler wants to talk a little bit about the zoning, and then if you had any questions about site constraint or some of the marketing issues and why we are a good fit for our seller and could be a good fit for Canton, I know that the seller can talk about it as well.
Why don't we, why don't you continue with your presentation? In fact, you'd mentioned before about some historical information. If you could go ahead and basically give your entire presentation, then we can go to the audience and go to the commission, you know, with things that we have heard you say or know about.
Well, we sort of-
If you don't mind doing that.
No, I don't at all, except that we sort of divided it up, maybe so you didn't have to hear me talk the whole time. So, Tyler will talk about the zoning.
Okay.
I can talk about it, but Tyler can probably speak more in code language. And then, of course, the seller has a more in-depth history.
Not too depth in, deep in the code, okay?
Okay.
Our resident attorney is not here, so.
Oh, well, my name is Tyler Tennant of Dotto Man. I'm outside counsel for Redwood. But Jeff should be your resident attorney because he did a really good job of explaining the concept of conditional zoning. It's a little different than straight rezoning and what it really does is it, we offer conditions that the township then responds to and that we have a conceptual plan, which is unlike most zoning, where you just come in and straight rezoning and you can build whatever permitted use is allowed under that district. Just to give you a brief history, the original offer, and this has been in the works for quite a while, the original offer by Redwood was made in January of this year and revised in June. And the original offer only related to the northern residential portion, but after consultation, as Kelly said, with staff, we decided that it would be better to match your master plan's intent to integrate the two developments, the commercial and the residential together in a true mixed-use fashion. So, really what we have here tonight is this process, the conditional zoning process, is really followed by two additional steps. First, we have to go to the board, of course, and get the conditional zoning and the agreement approved. Then, we're going to, we have to be back here and we will be talking about our preliminary PD plan and agreement. And then, once that, we get that resolved at this level, we'll go back up to the board. The board will bless it, hopefully, and then we're back down for final site plan approval. So, you really have two more opportunities to look at our concept plan, which you will be hopefully approving tonight, and we'll be able to tweak it and provide it in a very detailed fashion by the time we get to the final site plan process. So, what we want to do is rezone the property. We're really downzoning the northern portion of the property from commercial to residential to R6. And in doing so, we've agreed to restrict, if approved, our future uses of the site to what's on the concept plan, and specifically, we will exclude all the other uses allowed in R6. Some of, and you have a list there that we provided, but some of them are like religious institutions, schools, colleges, childcare centers, golf courses, adult daycare center, centers, active adult communities, mobile homes, family day homes, daycare homes, and the like. Likewise, the commercial portion down near Michigan Avenue, together with the owner, we have offered to restrict certain uses that would otherwise probably not be favored by this planning commission, including smoking lounges, adult regulated uses, boarding houses, junkyards, and other things that are currently allowed under the C3 zoning designation. But that we would buy this agreement that will be recorded against the property will be prohibited. And we've also offered to do the other things that Jeff talked about and Kelly touched on, having to do with paving Morton Taylor Road, dedicating all the improvements to the county. We have a shared landscaping and birmingham plan. We have safety paths along Morton Taylor Road. We're furnishing a road connection between the residential portion and the commercial portion and creating internal pedestrian walkways. So, in the big picture here, what happens is, once the conditional rezoning is approved, all these conditions run with the property and they prohibit the property from being developed in any other manner other than what's been approved on this concept plan. And if we can't agree on a plan development agreement within two years, which will have even more details about the plan, then the property reverts back to its original rezoning, or to its original zoning. And if we don't start the development within five years, again, it reverts to its original zoning. So, by rezoning it in this fashion, we feel it keeps, it allows the township really to keep a clear handle, hand in and management position on the actual site plan when it's agreed upon, and allows some flexibility in providing a mixed use development when otherwise, it's just simply zone C3 and could be used for any commercial purpose. And again, meeting the intent of your master plan. So, again, just to reiterate, this is the first step in a three-step process. We hope to be back here two more times with more specific plans as we go through the process. And I'd be happy to answer questions after we're done, but I'm going to turn it over now to the owner's representative, who can explain more about the history of how the property has been not used and how it's being used, hopefully now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. My name is John Gaber. I'm an attorney and I represent the property owners. The three of them are with us this evening. And I'm going to give you a little bit more broader perspective, I believe, on this particular property. My clients have owned this property for over 10 years, and as you might expect from your knowledge of the site features out there and the location, it's not an easy site to develop. There are a lot of issues with it. We originally looked at potentially locating, you know, big box developments there, primarily on the southeastern portion to the east of Morton Taylor Road. We had a deal in the works with Meyer that fell through at the last minute, and we also were under contract with Menards to build, and this was several years ago, toward the earlier stage of their ownership. Then, we had the, you know, the financial market collapse, basically, and, you know, the demand dried up for that type of use. So, my clients have been searching since that point in time for the right use and the right user for this particular property. And a few years ago, Redwood came along. We knew Redwood. We knew their reputation and such. We knew that they do a quality job. They're true to their word and they're incredibly reputable. We worked with them through different iterations of plans and contracts to, as Kelly said, to evolve into what you see in front of you this evening. We believe this is a very good use for the site because it does comply, as Jeff said, with your master plan change that you made a couple of years ago, to provide a cohesive mixed-use development. Now, the commercial, this is kind of a concept on the Michigan Avenue frontage, as to what the commercial may look like. A lot of that is driven by the potential tenants and occupants that, you know, come in. We don't have plans at this point in time, so that's why this isn't a conceptual type of framework. But what our hope is, is because of all the interconnectivity, both pedestrian and vehicular, what we're looking at doing is putting, you know, retailers, restaurant-type uses there that'll service the residents behind us, as well as some of the general population. So, that's what our hope is, and obviously, we'll be coming forward to you, not only through the process that Tyler mentioned, but hopefully, individual site plans for that particular development down the road. So, that's what our, that's what our plan is, and it's a little bit of the history. One other factor that you should, I'm not sure if you're aware of or not, but my clients own the 27-acre parcel that's north of the Rouge River. If you look at that east portion of the Redwood development, you've got the Rouge River north of there, and then there's a 27-acre wooded parcel immediately north of that, that kind of connects to the river shed, the trail and such. And what we've been doing is, we've been in discussions for the last, probably a couple of years almost, with the township to potentially use that as township park property, kind of a passive recreational area for the township, to do a land trade between that and some other residual property that the township has south of Michigan Avenue, that they have no plans and no use for. So, we're excited that, we believe that we'll be able to work that out, too. It's separate from this particular development and this transaction, but I wanted to make sure you knew about it because the Township Board discussed it approximately two years ago, and actually passed a resolution that the township move forward with discussions to see if we could bring this concept to fruition. And we think this would be, you know, quite a benefit to the township and its residents to expand the trail system and the, you know, the passive recreation in that particular area. So, we're hopeful that that's going to work out, as well as this particular development. So, with that, I will end my remarks right now, and we're here, the sellers are here, along with the developer, to obviously answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I want to go to the audience and ask if there are any comments, questions, concerns from anyone else other than the project sponsors and owners. Anyone at all want to come up and say a few words? Have any questions?
To close the public hearing.
Mic on? Yeah, it is. Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to start down with Commissioner O'Con, and we'll just go right through with any comments or concerns. We can also come back, so. Commissioner Bennett?
I like the, I do like the look of the layout. I do really like the idea of the commercial being set in the front to kind of keep with the theme of Michigan Avenue. Initially, when I saw the agenda item, I was concerned that there would be just suddenly apartments fronting Michigan Ave, which didn't seem to be fitting. But, this does look a little more fitting for the area. I am maybe a little concerned that it does seem like there's a lot of units, but maybe I'm just having a hard time conceptualizing, what, is it 68 acres? It's a lot of acreage, so perhaps it's not as, you know, cramped as it seems. I would like to have seen more, you know, maybe a park area, something like that, but maybe now is not the time to discuss that.
Parking for the residents?
Like a park.
Oh, park area.
A park. Somewhere to sit or, you know, it seems like everything is pretty close. Any open space that I see doesn't really, you know, it's between units. It wouldn't really make sense to maybe sit out there in between folks' patios. So, that right now is my only concern. But otherwise, I do like the, like the idea.
Eganberger?
Thank you. When I look at the satellite map of this area, so the ITC corridor trail, is that quite a ways further north?
Further west or to the east of the property?
Quite a bit further east. Okay, I was just thinking that would be a nice little pathway, if you could connect to that.
Yeah, it's on the right-hand side there.
Here's, you can see the Rouge Trail runs kind of along the Rouge, the Rouge River is way up here, so you can see the trail runs to the north of the orange line, and then it comes down and you can see where the trailhead actually is. You can see the, kind of the trails crisscross across Morton Taylor and through the woods there. So, that's the trail, is within the Rouge River, you know, the property Wing County owns for the Rouge River. So, this property here is the trailhead and the parking area, so you can see that the trail's going off, you know, to the north and to the east and west through the woods.
I was just thinking it would be a nice connector for the neighborhood if it was close, but.
Yeah, so they will basically be building the sidewalks along Morton Taylor to get to the trailhead, so it'll provide paved access to the trailhead and along with pedestrian access to the trailhead.
They'll just have to go back out to Morton Taylor to get there. Okay. Thank you. I think it looks great.
Most of the trail is on the north side of the river. There, it does cross over with the pedestrian bridges, so it crisscrosses through there. So, there's property owned, between their property on the east side of Morton Taylor and the Rouge is property owned by Waste Management, that they did a wetland mitigation area there, south side of the river. So, that property isn't controlled by them there, south of the trailhead.
That's a few. Okay. Commissioner Zuber?
Couple of questions on the site plan that you had up just a moment ago, Jeff. Can somebody explain what the significance of the different colored buildings is?
Yes, please.
This is actually Paul, our engineer's invention. As you imagine, we have to go through a different, a lot of, a lot of internal approvals and reviews, and all the boxes start to look the same unless you're looking, unless you're in the site design department. So, Paul came up with the idea of coloring all the different unit types. So, like that yellow one you see, that's a Capewood. It's got a sunroom on the end. The blues and the greens are the ones that you see at, on the Hagerty Road neighborhood. One thing that's really plays up is the fact that there's a lot of product differentiation here, whereas that's all the same unit. We've developed a few different unit types since then. So, the dark, like the dark salmon-colored ones, those are willowwoods. They're 38 feet wide, so they're wider and they're squatter. You can see the sunrooms on the end, and then some of them, like up and down Morton Taylor, they're front-facing, so they have front porches facing versus garages facing.
Thank you.
So, it's to differentiate the unit types.
That's, okay. And then I noticed, Jeff, in your comments, you said something about it would be, it would be nice if they could consider, I'm putting words into your mouth, maybe clustering and maybe having some two-story structures to help keep some of the wooded area preserved. Did I, am I misinterpreting?
You are concerned from day one on the, on the east side of Morton Taylor, it's heavily wooded with a drain running through there. In order to help reduce the amount of grading and tree removal on that side, you know, obviously, ranch units take up a lot of space. Between the footprint of the building and the paved areas and everything else, they take up a lot of space. So, mid-rise development is another option under the mixed use designation in this area. They chose not to go that direction. Redwood doesn't do anything other than ranch-type units. You know, so unless they had another buyer for that side, you know, that's not what their proposal is at this date. So, that was something we were trying to move the seller on in the direction, and they couldn't find a buyer that wanted to do that type of product there.
Let's say, I know this has been a big concern to Jess and I know Canton is tree city. So, one of the things that we did, we had King &amp; McGregor, who's a wetland firm, go out and take a look at the site. And there are some, there are some places where there's significant canopy and maybe 12- to 18-inch caliber trees there, but the majority of each side of the site is actually scrub and shrub, where there's no significant canopy developing. There's, much of the wooded area is down in the southeast corner, what's already, what's already zone commercial. There's like a half an acre portion in the middle, we're not touching at all. There is some places at the north, maybe there's like a half an acre, an acre at the north, the northeast part that is wooded, but the canopy, there isn't as much canopy as an aerial would have you believe. There are trees out there, absolutely, but it's not quite as dense as an aerial on Google Earth might have you believe.
The one benefit is they're not trying to relocate the drain, as prior proposals had, was relocating the drain and bringing the drain to Morton Taylor and running it along Michigan Avenue to open up the site and clear the entire thing. So, you have the south portion of the property adjacent to Morton Taylor that'll be untouched, along, you know, with the whole drain corridor and the buffer area, you know, will not be touched. One of the things they did is they did amend their conceptual plan to move the units out of the drain and river buffers. So, you know, those areas, you know, will not be touched. There might be some minor encroachments that they'll have to deal with as part of the plan development agreement, but the conceptual plan shows them out of the buffer areas at the current time. the current time.
Apartments for rent, not condos for sale.
Yes, that's part of the conditional zoning, so we'll have to do that. And then Redwood, Redwood has about 450, 425, 450 employees right now. The vast majority of the company, probably like 375 to 390 employees, is the property management company. What I do acquisition is the smallest side of our business. My job is to just feed the property management beast. We're actually up to over 10,000 units. We own everything we've ever built. Like I said, our business is property management.
Yeah, I'm not, personally, I'm not crazy about the front elevations with the garages coming forward, but I do understand that that's the best way to make the best use of the, of the space, but it's not, it's not the most appealing thing.
I mean, out of all the products, you don't have, all of the elevations weren't provided to us. I think some of the unit types, like the salmon colored ones that face Morton Taylor and the units that face the ponds and the commercial, those are actually front-facing units with front porches, which is a little bit different than we see at the Hagerty Road site. So that adds a little bit, kind of different flavor. So when you go down the road, you're not going to be looking at the garages you're going to be, unless you're internal, you're going to be looking at the fronts of the units, which will be a nice change in those particular locations.
For the sake of the people who can't see the packet, can you scroll down like three, just three screens or three pages to see the front elevation? Yeah, I mean, the 3D drawings, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is your typical unit that we normally, that we've seen like on Hagerty Road, is that correct, Kelly?
That is. Well, actually, this is not typical, this is an upgraded unit for us. Canton has higher, some roof pitch elevation, higher stone requirements and some other things that give it the uniquely Canton look for us.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yeah, my questions were very similar to Commissioner Zubor's and they have been addressed, so nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay. The concept of the development, a planned development district like this allows for some flexibility, allows for cohesiveness of the different zoning requirements, residential and a commercial. I'm getting the gist here that even though commercial is part of this, you're not really ready to delve into the commercial at this point. And it's kind of disappointing because it like, to me, we're basically dealing with two different neighborhoods again, instead of one cohesive neighborhood with two great elements. Is there a reason why commercial is being put off at this time?
Yeah, I think if the seller had a user, they could plug in there right now, they would plug in a user right now, but I think they're still looking. But we're aware that that's an issue and the staff has been very clear that this is to function as one cohesive development. So some of the things that you can't, is it all right if I step out?
Yes.
So some of the things that you see are blend itself with cohesiveness. We've got shared stormwater, we've got some walking trails going through, things like that, the safety paths up and down, the road connections as well, the front-facing units here, so that it's not just people's catio flipping out, but actually like a front porch feel. What you don't see there because it's a little early in the process is the commitment that the seller and Redwood have made to developing a consistent landscape, streetscape, street lighting scheme, so that when the seller is ready with the user to come in, which I don't need John to come up here to tell you they would like to happen sooner rather than later, those commitments will already be in place in the PD agreement, so whoever goes there will share those landscaping standards, the street-like requirements, those sorts of things, so that it does feel and function as one mixed-use development.
Jeff, the paving of Morton Taylor and including the Birmingham, so this would be a unified streetscape look all the way up to the trail? Is that, is that the idea?
I mean, yeah, I mean, basically, they'll be doing it as part of the, you know, as part of the first phase of the apartments. You know, I think they'll probably want to do one side and then the other, but yeah, they'll bring in site plans and they'll have a unified landscaping, you know, plan along Morton Taylor, they'll put the sidewalks in, they'll put whatever street lighting and things that they're going to put in as sort of attributes to the apartment complex and they'll have to follow those through with the entrances to the commercial areas.
That would include sidewalk, you know, all the way up on both sides?
Right, so they're showing the sidewalk there, except they don't own the two out parcels there, as you see on the west side of Morton Taylor, they do not own those two parcels, nor do they own, there's a house on the parcel in between two of the commercial buildings that they do not control yet. One of the things that we would ask when they get, if and when they get to the next stage of plan development is try to get easements from those property owners to continue the sidewalks along the fronts of those properties to make those connections, so we don't have gaps.
That was my next, my next concern.
I mean, that's something that at this point, you know, they can't commit to since they don't control that property, but that's something that when we work with plan development, it's just like with the final site plan, we'll see later tonight with Park Creek, you know, they're actually providing sidewalks in front of those gaps, you know, as part of their agreement for, under their plan development.
And are we talking a three-lane road, Morton Taylor?
Probably a two-lane road, I mean, it's basically serving, you know, apartments to either side. There's a separate entrance, you know, for the commercial off of Michigan Avenue and off of Morton Taylor. I doubt whether it would be more than a two-lane road. That'll be up to Wayne County to determine whether or not they need enhancements to the intersection point, like the main intersection point, whether or not there needs to be a turn lane in and out of the apartments there at the main, you know, crossroads there. So though, as we get through the, to the PDD and the site plan portion, those details and, you know, and geometries for the road geometry and cross-sections will be flushed out in a little bit more detail.
In the verbiage, the conditions, developer shall not use the residential development, I'll skip a few words, prohibited uses as defined, including housing for the elderly. What are we talking about there? We're talking about a dedicated housing or are you not selling to people my age?
Like Canton Place, you know?
Yeah.
Like a seniors high-rise or something that's dedicated and age restricted, you know? And housing for the elderly could be independent living, you know, which would be a larger, you know, building that's, you know, dedicated to seniors or it could be assisted living, those kinds of things, so.
It's listed here, active adult communities as well.
Well, active and adult is a special land use in the district and it's basically a larger project that has a mix of active adult uses. So we've never used that provision on our zoning code. It was set up for property along Getty's Road and it was never used in that fashion.
Okay, but it's prohibited here.
Right, which means that they cannot ever make an application for that. All, they're trying to restrict the use to what you see on paper and restrict all other uses.
Okay. One of them, this might be a misverbiage here, that municipal buildings and uses not requiring outside storage of materials. That sounds like a double negative. You're prohibiting buildings not requiring the usage of out, or storage of outside instead of prohibiting, prohibiting buildings that do require outside storage.
So was the intent to prohibit all municipal buildings or public buildings?
No, I mean, we just took it out of the code. It was the line of a program.
I guess it's the double negative I'm reading in this, we don't want buildings that require outside storage, right?
Right.
And that's not how I read that there. And this would become part of the condition, so I, that's why I'm going over it now.
I think the way the code is written, it says in the district, you can have municipal buildings that don't require outside storage, which means you can have a municipal office building, not like a DPW yard that has a yard. So he's basically prohibiting that use in quotes. So it is sort of a double negative, but it's not really.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, and on the commercial side, prohibited use workshops for trades such as plumbers, electricians, et cetera, et cetera. What was the thinking there? I mean, that's just.
And have a, you can't have a contractor's yard.
Well, not a yard, but I mean.
A contractor's establishment always has a yard associated with it.
I'm thinking in terms of, oh, okay.
I mean, if somebody wants to have a.
Now I understand that, okay.
Like if somebody has an office and they don't have their facility there that has all their storage and all their trucks there, that's one thing, but.
Okay, I'd agree with that.
But generally, a contractor establishment, you have to have outdoor storage and parking for all of their vehicles and the equipment and supplies and those kinds of things.
And you list boarding house, does that include any temporary housing?
A boarding house has a specific definition of the.
Okay, because, you know, conceivably at some time down the line, there could be some sort of motel or something of that nature?
I mean, motels and hotels are special land use in C3, so I don't know. Would you object to having a hotel or motel on the front edge of Michigan Avenue?
Well, it's just that we want to have, maintain the control of what it looks like, the appearances, et cetera, et cetera. Let's see, safety path.
I mean, these are the, I mean, these are their offers. I mean, this is their offer to further restrict the property.
And that's, and that's the reason why I'm going over it, because it's, you know, this is obviously going to become part of the deal here if we accept it. Was there a reason that you didn't go higher and smaller with the designs?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to just go a little around. We have eight core values in our company. They are everywhere you look. If you come in, they're on 24 by 36 canvases in our lobby hallway ends. People have them as screensavers. I have cards in my luggage, not in my bag, that I hand out that have our core values. The number one core value we have is do one thing really well. That is what we do well. It is the only thing we build. It's a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment with a two-car attached garage, a driveway and a patio on the back. That is the only thing that we build.
Have you taken a tour of any part of Canton in your visit?
Yes, I ate at Canton Pita, I have my hair blown out in Cherry Hill, went to the Ikea.
The village, okay.
There's a sushi place, a juice place, I spent, yeah.
What do you say, what would you say distinguishes your design from what we already have in Canton?
Well, I would say the only thing that you have like this in Canton in terms of apartment housing is Enclave at Branst on the one Hagerty Road. Obviously, what distinguishes us from other apartment, apartments is the multi-story. You could probably find some condominiums that are single-story ranch style, but we don't sell anything. We only rent, we own everything we ever build. I would say our architecture is maybe not, certainly not as varied as you find in your single-family communities, but I would say that the gingerbread on it is similar because I know at Enclave, Jeff really put us through our paces on what the outside of those homes is going to look like. And not just the front, but if you go to the sides and the rears, you'll find bump-out bays and cantilevered things and upgrades that we don't, we do when we're required, we do when the ordinance requires them, when a PDD requires them, but it's not part of our standard product. So that's how I'd say we are different and how we are the same.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this, and I'm just, I'm just going to be blunt, I'm a little disappointed in this, in this design, and the reason is twofold. Number one, for it to be cohesive would mean that we have some idea as to what's going to go in commercially, or what, who you're seeking. I know a lot of times that's kept secret until deals are actually signed and whatnot. But I feel as though we're just dealing with an attempt to just put in a normal subdivision, normal residential subdivision, and maybe when we get around to it, we'll put in some commercial. And this subdivision, really, it doesn't seem special to me. Number one, the designs really, when you look at the photographs, it's just garage doors. It really is not a thrilling thing, and I think Canton's got an opportunity here to have something really special that we don't have. And I personally was hoping that we would see some high-rise buildings in here with a lot less tearing down of trees and basically having more space in between buildings and having a unique type of environment that we don't have anywhere else in the subdivision. And I'm sorry if that sounds too negative, I'm just looking at grabbing the best for what Canton can get.
Well, that is your job to advocate and I always appreciate people's honesty. This was a lot of work for us and I understand through this site plan approval process, if we're rezoned, we'll probably be doing some more tweaking. We're actually down, our original plan, I think, had 260-something units and we're down to 235, 239, so we had done a lot of work in there. And what you can't see are some, because it's not a site plan, so you don't have the illustre, you don't have the landscape, the opportunities for park at parks, the fragile part of the wetlands that we're preserving and how we might be able to make that amenity. As for the commercial, John's here and I know he wants to speak to it. And he can talk to all the efforts that the sellers have made over the years to have people here. This is not, I can speak from Redwood's perspective, this is not an effort to pull a fast one and get our stuff in and.
Don't mean to intimate that.
No, no, but I want to be, I want to be frank, and if that's a concern that someone may have under the surface, this is not trying to use the zoning so that we can come in, throw our stuff down and maybe some commercial goes in later. This is a good faith effort to find how we, we want to be in Canton more, we want to be a better presence in Canton. And this was a good fit for us, it allowed us to preserve some beautiful wetlands, connect a trail and start that, but the seller, despite his efforts, doesn't have a commercial buyer to share with you. And I'll let John talk a little bit about what those good faith and persistent efforts have been over the years.
Okay.
Relative to this particular concept and this design, the sellers are marketing the commercial portions of the property. The problem is the way it works with potential retailers, restaurants, those type of users, is they want to see what's going to develop here. They want to ensure that there's going to be a commitment for this residential component. So while they're interested right now and they're lukewarm, they're not going to make any commitments unless and until they actually see the residential development coming out of the ground. So that's kind of the catch-22 situation is in the normal progression of things, you're going to see the residential start first, then the commercial is going to infill at that point in time, when those particular users understand that there is a commitment for this residential development. So that's, that's part of the issue we're having on the timing, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, all right, it's a reasonable explanation. I just, I guess I'm a little disappointed in just the, maybe it's the way it's conveyed. It just feels as though, as you said, you know, when we get around to it, we'll delve into the commercial. And this is a very valuable area of Canton and I just, I want to see it handled well. And I just feel as though there's more that could be done here, yes?
Question for Jeff. So Jeff, this has been C3 for, you know, quite a while. Nothing has been able to go in there.
Right, yeah, as John mentioned, the big box users came and went a number of years ago. This, one of the issues with this area of Morton Taylor is not close enough to the freeway and it's not close enough to the Canton Center to Michigan, or to the Beck Road commercial node. It doesn't have direct access to the community because Morton Taylor doesn't connect up to the north. So you can't get, from a commercial standpoint, you can't get to it from the side county roads without having to go across Michigan Avenue and back around like you have to go to the trailhead. So from a commercial standpoint, it's a little bit difficult. So from the type of commercials they're going to be able to generate is basically, is, you know, with the number of trips on Michigan Avenue for people going and coming to work, it's going to be bypass type of commercial that's going to attract, you know, people that are already on the road. So from the community standpoint, unless you've got, you know, something that's going to, you know, be a destination, it's not that convenient for the community to get to. So it's going to be highway type of commercial. I would expect, you know, there'd be, to be a wide, you know, there could be some restaurants there, there could be some like retail there. I doubt whether retail is going to be a huge factor there just because it's not that close to community unless it's more, you know, regionally based retail like Tractor Supply, you know, which is going on across the street.
Is that basically why the Myers and Menards were not?
Well, I think Menards, you know, we actually, with Menards, we actually established, you know, a zoning code that they could work with in terms of dealing with their outside storage for their lumberyard portion and dealing with their home improvement portion of the store. So they end up going to Van Buren and Livonia, I think, where they were in areas that were more suitable for them, that were kind of semi-industrial commercial areas. I mean, you know, Costco's been looking at, you know, has been looking at Canton for a number of years. They had a site where Walmart is now, they decided not to do it at the time, they may be back. But part of the problem is, is this is one of these tweener locations. Either they want to be closer to where the other commercial is from a big box standpoint or they want to be closer to the expressway. So you have users like Tractor Supply and other things that are more, you know, attract from a wider variety area, you know, and, you know, and people will go there just because it's easy to get to because Michigan Avenue is a regional corridor. We attract from Wayne and Westland because there isn't a whole lot of necessarily, you know, bigger commercial areas in Wayne and Westland. We attract from Ipsy and Ipsy Township because the closest, you know, you know, higher intensity commercial district in there is Carpenter Road, you know, and Pittsfield, you know, along that corridor and in that south end there. So, you know, so, you know, what we've seen, you know, with Michigan Avenue, it is regional type traffic. You know, you've got a lot of commuters going back and forth from 275 to 94, you've got a lot of commuters that live in Canton that go back and forth and use Michigan Avenue to get one place or another. It's not Ford Road where you can get easy access to the community from, it's just a different environment. So, you know, one of the things that we've cautioned them is to make sure they have enough depth on the commercial. depth on the commercial, so it gives them the flexibility and the, and the depth to get in a decent-sized building and the associated parking and things. Because we, I doubt whether typical strip development is gonna be successful along this portion of Michigan Avenue. We have, the only really strip commercial we have on Michigan Avenue without parcels in front of, of Kroger that have, you know, attracted, you know, the smaller user that needs more visibility than being, than from being buried back in the shopping center. So, I mean, those are kind of all of the things that we've talked about over the past year, and they put their, you know, best, you know, foot forward on creating something that's conceptual, that gives their footprints enough ability to flex back and forth, I think, from a site plan standpoint. It looks like there's enough depth there to, you know, to make it work, you know, you know, from, you know, an individual building standpoint or pairs of buildings or connected buildings somehow. So that's why John said, at this point, until they have a tenant, right now, you build a suit, pretty much. You don't do speculative commercial anymore. Banks won't lend money for speculative commercial. Unless you have, you know, tenants in place, it's not happening. So, you know, commercial's always gonna come in after.
Well, I know, I noticed a temporary layout there. Was that just thrown together in terms of, well, we gotta throw some intent for commercial buildings, or is that the ideal layout for that, given that size property?
Um, we, this is another evolution that we went through. Originally, there were different-sized buildings on here, maybe a little bigger, and then that we might have showed offices at one point. It went through a couple of different iterations. And each iteration, the one that we arrived at here was in response to both our meetings with, our meetings with staff and interests that the seller had had from potential users. And with that consultation, it was to say, this was probably the best to show, with the understanding that if a user came along that required a slightly bigger footprint or, or was a really great user, that the seller might have to come back and ask for an amendment to the PD to accommodate a different footprint on that commercial. I will tell you, this was one of the most challenging parts, was designing commercial for a user that's not there and finding something that was responsive to staff's current concerns and also response to feedback seller was getting from potential users. So this is, the seller's willing to commit to this, but the seller also understands that he may have to ask for an amendment if a more appropriate, a use, a more appropriate user, an appropriate user comes along with a slightly different footprint.
Right, and therein lies my concern that, that we go about this piecemeal on the commercial side. I don't think that that's good for Canton because you end up settling for something just because they'll pay rent.
Well, you know, Greg, one thing to consider is the conditional zoning agreement is only good for two years. If they come, and that's why we wanted the commercial incorporated into the conditional zoning, and then it can be incorporated into the PD agreement, because I didn't want the commercial to be left out on itself without being in some type of agreement to give us some kind of guarantees relative to these other design factors to make it integrated. So one of the things that it will happen, since there's a, they have to go through a three-stage approval here. The conditional zoning, the board has to go through two hearings on the, you know, two readings on the conditional zoning, have to record the agreement. Once the zoning entitlement is play, in place, it's gonna make it easier for them to market it because there's a preliminary zoning approval. So hopefully, by the time they come in with final PDD, we'll have more information on terms of what type of commercial is going to be there. So by doing the conditional zoning and tying, you know, the conditional zoning to a, a PDD agreement, you know, within this first two years of entitlement, that's why conditional zoning is only good for two years. If something doesn't happen, it goes away.
Right. But they, in the meantime, let's say that this does go through the channels according to plan, and the residential then begins.
The residential will begin.
Okay, so, but then the...
She's sitting in front of you saying they're ready to start.
Right, so at that point, if, if we, if the commercial has not been designed or the, if we're gonna end up piecemealing, is what I'm getting at. Or they could end up selling it, that part of the property off, to another commercial developer.
Right, they have to main, under a plan development, they have to maintain unified control of the property, just like Cherry Hill Village. It's a large square-mile development, mixed-use development. You had commercial, you had residential, you had, you can just see now some of the commercials just now happening. But we had a concept plan in terms of where it was gonna be and how it was gonna lay out and how it was gonna integrate with the village. So if you think about it that way, this is just a smaller version of Cherry Hill Village, just in a different environment. They're trying to lay this out so that there's interconnections and, and, you know, in between the, and, and orienta, orientation of the buildings and streets and things so that it maintains the...
But without the commercial design, the interconnections don't necessarily work.
The roads are gonna be where the roads are, Greg. So they've, they've connected where the roads are, and they've connected where the pedestrian paths are. Whether or not this is three buildings or one big building, it doesn't, you know, it could be one building, it could be two buildings there instead of three buildings on the west side of Morton Taylor. I understand what your concern is, and this is the concern we wrestled with since January in terms of how to deal with this. I think they came back with their best effort in terms of doing something that's realistic that they can market. But yeah, you're right. After the PDD, you know, is done in five years, this may go away.
Chairman, just, you know, my two cents here. I completely understand where you're coming from. This layout right now, right now seems very chopped up, chunky, incomplete thing. I mean, you, I see two big parcels that they don't even have control over. That's smack dab in the middle of what they're trying to develop. You know, like they said, it's, it's been sitting for a long time. I'm hoping that getting some residential over there will be able to get the commercial going. I think when we originally thought our intent for this area was mixed use, I was hoping to see a little bit more mixed use versus, it seems like they're just kinda residential here, and we'll fill in the rest later. I think this is a good spot where some of that up-frontal on Michigan Avenue might be offices, might turn into, you know, a dentist office or whatever it is if we start providing more residential.
Because we need more dentist office?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, dentist office. I know we have a, one or two. But, you know, provide more residential in this area, maybe those uses turn into more offices, maybe they turn into more mom-and-pop, little commercial places. I don't know.
So you think that the, that the residential's gonna drive the commercial? I'm gonna, I can understand that, but I'm gonna look at Cherry Hill Village, since Jeff brought it up, and say, I don't think so because, look at the rooftops in Cherry, Cherry Hill, but you don't see businesses just clamoring to get in.
Okay, but Cherry Hill Village doesn't have a state highway running by it, Greg.
That's true. Okay, I understand, I understand those different dynamics, but what I'm saying is that that's a gamble, that I'm not sure that, that this product is going to...
I mean, essentially, what I would love to see, if you've seen in, in Pittsfield Township in front of the Meyer, Meyer sold off their entire frontage there along Ann Arbor-Saleen Road, and they've got all of these buildings there that basically, they took the entire front part of the parking lot, and instead of doing outlaws, they created a combination of, of, of buildings that basically are right on the road. Now, Ann Arbor-Saleen is different than Michigan Avenue, and this is gonna be set back a little bit further. But, you know, people want exposure to the road, you know, the commercial businesses, you know, and they want, they wanna pull that traffic in off the road, and they wanna have the ability to have convenient, you know, people to come in and convenient. These people that live here are gonna need services, and they're gonna need someplace to eat, and they may not wanna go all the way up to Ford Road to get it. You know, there's only 250 units here, but that doesn't mean that with, between the bypass traffic and the residential traffic, that there's not gonna be some demand for additional commercial services or retail or some other, a mix of office, you know, and things, and of people that, you know, maybe don't have the opportunity right now to locate on Michigan Avenue because there's really nothing there for them. I mean, we're, we've got pockets of Michigan Avenue that do, do great, but we have pockets there that are still kinda developing, you know, across the street, you know, we have the Family Fun Garage, and we have some other things across the street now that are starting to develop. And we've got all of the recreational, you know, attributes on the south side of Michigan Avenue. It creates a lot of demand for services for those people that use those facilities. So I think we're, you know, this is, this is one of these areas where, you know, we're moving down the road, and we can't control demand for commercial.
Understand.
We can provide incentives for commercial to be there. And I think with a zoning plan that provides some zoning entitlements, yeah, we're not guaranteed anything, but at least we're setting it up for success, for it to be successful from a commercial standpoint. If they're putting, you know, all of the infrastructure in to begin with and setting these pads up that can be marketed, right now, there's nothing to market because there's nothing existing. So they need to create, they're creating their own product by putting this plan together.
Yeah, and I think, I think, again, it's, it's, yeah, I wish I was seeing a complete plan right now. I would be, I would feel way better. I don't.
And I, and I think...
You know, the information is what we have. I mean, I see a commercial, commercial on the front of Michigan Avenue, right? And their current plan shows no curb cuts to Michigan Avenue. What business wants to go there without a curb cut?
And we don't even see any conceptual elevations of, you know, of buildings that, how that's gonna look from Michigan Avenue, how that's gonna represent Canton, you know...
I have a quick question.
At this point, this is a zoning plan. It's not a plan development plan. So you need to look at it as a zoning plan, not necessarily...
Yeah, I know, but we're talking conditional, which means that we've, we've got some, some variances here that we can do.
Well, no, conditional zoning cannot grant variances.
Well, not, not variances in that sense, but, but in terms of, of...
This is a take-it-or-leave-it. You either accept the plan and the conditions, or you don't. If you do not feel it meets the intent of our development regulations and our master plan, then you can recommend to the board to deny the conditional zoning based on what you feel is appropriate for the area based on zoning conditions. It's a zoning application. It's not a site plan, it's not a plan development. This is a zoning application. The only difference is, is you've got a conceptual plan to look at, which, and you've got restrictions on the plan that you don't normally have. So you either find those are acceptable, or you don't find those are acceptable.
Well, I would, I would like it not to be quite so black and white if we could work with the project sponsors.
But you can't negotiate with them at this stage. This is conditional zoning. It's not, it's not negotiable. If, if you, what they would have to do is, if you recommended a denial of, of the application tonight, and they wanted to move forward to the board, what they would have to do is probably come back, modify the plan, and go through a public hearing again for you to reconsider the conditional rezoning. They cannot, you cannot grant a condition, you cannot grant, you can't place any conditions on your approval, you can't put any provisos on it. So you either accept and reject, and based on your discussion, they can take that discussion under consideration and come back and reapply. So that's the general process for conditional zoning. It's, you know, it's, there's no discretion here. It's, they're voluntarily statements of conditions.
Right.
So, so you can't ask them to add to it. I mean, they can always come back and reapply and add to those conditions or do more work on the plan, but that's up to them on how they wanna proceed with the application after you get done with it.
Yeah, just a quick question, like, like the, the little parcel in the front that's currently not part of this plan, the, I believe it's designated O1. If, for some reason, a month from now or a couple of months from now when they come back with the site plan, if they acquire that piece of property, what happens to that zoning?
Well, they would need to then make an application to either incorporate it into the conditional zoning agreement, or they would need to use it as office or rezonate to C3 or another, something else is, that's appropriate under the master plan.
Could I make a motion, and then we can kinda see where we stand?
Go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the request to rezon the subject property from C3 Regional Commercial to R6 Single Family Attached Residential District and C3 Regional Commercial Districts on the said tax parcels. I'm not gonna read all those numbers. Subject to the conceptual development plan and voluntary offer provided in a statement of conditions per the attached ordinance as the proposal does meet the criteria of the mixed-use policy 1.5.2A and the general development objectives of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
No, but the motion passes. So their next step would be...
Their next step is August 27th for first reading of the ordinance amendment to the Township Board, and then in September for second reading if it passes first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck to you. Okay, all right. Okay, our next agenda item is the McMahon helicopter hangar. We're considering a special land use approval for property which is located south of Joy and east of Lily, near Meditool Airport, as most of us know. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes, sir. Let me just get to it on the screen here. Second item, a couple of months ago, the Planning Commission and Township Board looked at an ordinance amendment which kinda clarified airport-related uses in our zoning code. So this was specifically made by McMahon Helicopter for the purpose of relocating their business from Ronda Drive to Lily, to Lily Road. So we established some zoning ordinance guidelines for airport-related uses that were a little bit unclear in the zoning code relative to what we call airport landing fields. So, so this basically dealt with associated uses or accessory uses to the airport that had agreements with the airport to use the airport for part of their business operations. So they're proposing to, as I say, move their existing location on Ronda Drive and build a new 19,000-square-foot facility on Lily Road adjacent to the airport, which would have access agreement from Meditool Airport for the business. The McMahon facility includes 15,000-square-foot of a hangar space for their helicopters, 4,000 square-foot administrative office area. So the, we worked with them on the conceptual plan to make sure it was gonna pass muster when they got to site plan. So the plan that you have in front of you shows that they can meet all the requirements for the special land use guidelines that we set forth relative to the use. It's a very compatible use. They're already, you know, operating from the airport. This is a, a site on Lily Road, kinda north of where the, north of where the detention pond for the airport is, like off of Lily Road. So essentially, I think there's some automobile repair uses to the north on that side of Lily Road. So as you can see, the airport here is off to the, to the, to the east side of their property. You can see where the apron would be for their helicopters coming onto the airport property and the overall layout of the plan. Some of the stormwater that they'll be dealing with, it would be underground, their parking lot would be to the north of the building. They're showing they can meet all the setbacks, all of the other guidelines for, you know, landscaping along the road, access to the airport, and, and parking for their office facility. We've got Casey Leach with us tonight to explain their, their project in a little bit more detail. Here's a color kind of rendering which kinda shows it a little bit better, to give you an idea. They would have to go through a, a, once a special land use is approved by the board, they would have to come back and do a site plan under industrial zoning that would be an administrative approval. They do have concepts to show what the building would look like, you know, in terms of, the airport side is mostly metal because it's hangar space and they have to open the doors. The Lily Road space, you know, the office portion is mostly, mostly masonry. So from the Lily Road side, it would really add to the, the atmosphere that we've already got going on with some of the newer buildings along Lily Road. So with that, I'll turn it over to Casey or whoever is representing McMahon, so...
Come on up. And with that, thank you, Jeff. And with that, we, this is a public hearing. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
All right, got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hello, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Mark Roth with the Sidoc Group. I live at 30655 Old Stream, Southfield, Michigan. Casey couldn't be here tonight. He and his wife just had a baby, so I'm pinch-hitting tonight.
Okay, well, welcome.
Nick McMahon, I'm president of McMahon Helicopter Services. We've been here for 39 years. It's been a family-owned business since 1980. I live in Canton at 8039 North Ridge Road and looking forward to hopefully moving across the airport and continuing to do what we do, so, thank you.
All right, all right, very good. Anyone from the audience like to say anything, question, anything? Come on up, sir.
Thank you for the, for the welcome. My name is Brian Buds. I'm the deputy administrator for the Office of Aeronautics for the Michigan Department of Transportation, the owners and sponsor of the Canton Plymouth-Meditool Airport. We just wanted to lend our support to the project. We appreciate the work McMahon has done and some of the additional support they provided We just wanted to lend our support to the project. We appreciate the work McMahon has done and some of the additional support they provided the airport. So just want to lend our support, and if you have any questions from an airport standpoint, we're happy to answer them.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that, that input. Awesome, awesome. Okay, anyone else from the audience?
If you can just fill out a card for me, so we have you.
Yeah, yeah, we do need that.
Hello, my name is Gerard Folk. I own Bill Brown Auto Clinic just north of the.
Site?
Site there. I, I offer my approval, or not approval, but I offer my support for the program, and I look forward to being on our side of the airport.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Coming out and supporting.
Anyone else? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber at 7:10, and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, yes, 8:10, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna start down at this end. Commissioner Acharya, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns?
No.
Commissioner Engel?
All set, thank you.
Commissioner Zuber?
Nope, can't think of a darn thing.
Not a thing? Okay. Commissioner Egenberger?
No, I have no concerns, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
Good to me.
All right, Commissioner Okon?
When do we sign up our kid to take a test flight? Ah. I have no comment.
I have a question for our resident architect up here. The, the side or the elevation facing Lilly Road, the west elevation, do you feel that that needs to be spruced up a little bit?
It's not the prettiest it could be, but it is an airport building.
It is, but we're talking about just coming up Lilly Road.
I drive up that way every day to work, so.
Leave it alone, or would you put like?
There's 40 feet of landscaping in front of it, Greg. They have foundation landscaping and roadway landscaping that'll be along Lilly Road.
Are they all 12-foot trees?
They will be in a couple of years, so.
All right, that would be, my only concern was just, just, just the appearance from Lilly Road. I thought maybe since it's brick on that side, we might have pilasters, you know, every so often, just to kind of like break up the oneness of it. It's, it's not a big deal.
We can look at some banding or some soldier coursing or something, so it's just not a blank facade across there. We could look at.
Right.
Using the existing masonry and doing some recesses, or some banding, or some accent colors, or a base color or something.
Back me up on these things.
I'm with you. I didn't say no.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the requests for special land use for airport-related business for McMahon Helicopter Services on parcels as noted, as the request meets the general criteria for special land uses and specific criteria for airport-related businesses.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Good luck to you.
Good.
And thank you. Our third agenda item of the night is Anand Village, where we're considering reapproval of a preliminary site plan, which was approved before. Properties located south of Geddes, east of Denton. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes, Anand Village was approved over almost two years ago by the Planning Commission Township Board with preliminary site plan. They've worked with Wayne County for the past year or so, working on final stormwater design. They haven't been real active in getting their engineering plans done. So they're finally ready to move forward. They've submitted engineering plans for, you know, the rest of the permitting for the project, but their preliminary site plan expired in December of 2019. So just as a recap, this is 11.5 acres on the southeast corner of Denton and Geddes Road. It's gonna include 40 and 55-foot wide building pads with ranch-style condominium-style homes. Generally, the first floor plans, you know, have about 1,700 square feet. They have a future clubhouse planned on the site, but they don't, that's not included at this point on the site plan. So they would have to come in later and, and do a separate site plan for the clubhouse. That's the building shown in red. So their primary entrance is north of Crystal Village with a boulevard entrance off of Denton Road. They have a secondary access to meet fire access requirements and pond access requirements, as you can see next to the clubhouse. So they have to build that. It's a grass paper type of driveway, but since it's more than 30 units, the fire department requires two points of access. And they had, tried to work with Crystal Village to connect to the south of Crystal Village, and the Crystal Village Association did not want them to interconnect with their road system at that time, so, so they've kind of left that open. You can see there, south is actually to the left on this site. You can see that open park area. That would be, if it connected to Crystal Village, there's a T-drive that they could connect at a future point, you know, if it was ever possible, or if the fire department needed to get through there. You know, we'll look at, at that from an emergency standpoint as part of final site plan. Other than that, this is a reapproval of the preliminary site plan. The stormwater, there were a couple minor revisions to the storm plan and landscaping plan around the pond pursuant to Wayne County, but other than this, this is exactly what you approved two years ago, so we'd recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a project sponsor here? Would you like to say, add any more to what Jeff has said?
Mark Marjan from Fairway Engineering. I'm the engineer of the project, and Nitin Chowdhury is the project owner, sponsor.
Okay.
While for this project to go through stormwater ordinance with the Wayne County, and we had some major project changes during previous approval, so taking into all that consideration, we are ready to move forward now to next step for the project for.
Yeah, they should be back in for final site plan within a couple of months as soon as they finish up engineering.
Okay, just gonna open it up to the commission. Any questions, concerns, comments, anything at all?
Couple of questions. Jeff, I can't remember two years ago, you know, but is there a reason why we did not try to connect to the subdivision to the south?
We did. Crystal Village didn't want to connect. They're two condominium streets. They didn't want traffic from Anand going into Crystal Village.
We ever put easement requirements on developments like this?
We can't on condominiums.
Not at all?
They're private streets, so the, the road is teed in there. We worked with them when we went through preliminary. They tried to negotiate an easement agreement even for a grass paper driveway, and I don't believe that was fruitful at the time, so.
Just second question. Developments like this get kind of caught up with fitting in a hole. Is there any, is there any playscapes or anything where, where the children of the, of these condos can easily?
This is mostly a retirement-type community, if I understand, so this is basically being marketed to empty nesters.
But it's not restricted. It's not age-restricted.
Are you gonna age-restricted development, or is it?
Oh, it's not restricted.
But it's being marketed to basically seniors.
Yeah, it's similar to next door.
Okay, grandkids can play?
Right, yes.
I'm just asking, like I said, it seems like developments like this kind of get tucked away, and everybody kind of forgets about the, you know, the 30 residents that live here with the families and.
I mean, there's substantial open space in the center of the development. I mean, they've got areas, you know.
It'd just be nice to see something if it's possible.
Play on Geddes.
I don't, I don't think we want the kids to be playing at the corner of Geddes and back.
That's it? Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
What are the, what are the things in the middle, the lines?
That's an underground storm system.
Oh, oh, well, we were thinking perhaps that could.
Yeah, they couldn't fit all of their storm system in the pond on the corner, so they had to put some of their, their stormwater system underground in between the units. So that'll all be green space, but that'll, so those green lines will be underground, so.
All right, anyone else?
You wanna swing that?
I'm, I'm good with it, myself. Next up?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the preliminary site plan for Anand Village located on tax parcel, as noted, as proposed.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, will you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Hey.
All set.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, our fourth agenda item of the night is the Ford Canton Center Office Building, where we're considering a site plan approval for property located west of Canton Center between Ford and Hanford. Patrick, could you give us the lowdown on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For this site, the applicant is proposing to construct a 4,000-square-foot professional and business office building on a vacant site that's located on the west side of Canton Center Road, as you see there, just north of Maven Road, and also it contains the Fellows Creek Drain, but the developable piece of property is just north of the Fellows Creek Drain. One entrance drive is proposed on the site, and the site is owned C-2 Community Commercial, and professional and business offices are permitted uses in the C-2 district. It's worth noting that medical office uses for this site won't work for a couple of reasons. The first is that there is not sufficient parking on the site to meet the parking ratio for medical offices. The second reason is that this is a two-story building that won't have an elevator, and according to the Americans with Disabilities Act, a medical office building that's more than one story would be required to have an elevator. So it's already self-restricting in terms of not allowing a medical office, or a dentist office, or anything like that. So it would be for a professional office type of use, or something that could meet the parking and the building code ratios. For the parking of the site itself, the site has sufficient parking for a business office use, which is 16 spaces calculated at one space per 250 square feet for the 4,000-square-foot office building. For the loading, the zoning ordinance requires one loading space, but also allows the planning commission to modify the loading requirements upon making a determination that another standard would be more appropriate based on the number or type of deliveries experienced by a particular business or use. The site plan includes a written request to the planning commission to waive the loading space requirement. For a general office use, it would have some deliveries for UPS and FedEx, but it would be rare where there would be a large loading vehicle requiring a loading space. So for that reason, we recommend modifying it to not require the loading space. For the schedule regulations, the applicants have also requested a modification for the parking lot front yard setback. The zoning ordinance prohibits parking within the required 50-foot front yard setback, and the proposed parking lot has a front yard setback of 20 feet. The zoning ordinance does allow the planning commission to permit parking in the front yard when it can be demonstrated that the elimination of parking in the front yard is not practical. The site plan includes a written request to the planning commission for a front yard parking setback. Based on the size of the site and the triangular configuration of the site, also as well as the required setback from Fellows Creek to the south, we recommend that the planning commission permit the parking lot to be located in the front yard with a setback of 20 feet from the road right of way. And the front yard would still have the required landscaping along Canton Center Road. Next, under the schedule regulations, is the proposed drainage easement setback. This is something where the applicants will be required to apply for a variance from the zoning board of appeals, and they have made application for a variance, and this will be on the September ZBA agenda. And that's for the drainage easement setback from Section 2.24(c) of the zoning ordinance. This section of the zoning ordinance requires a 25-foot minimum buffer measured either from the edge of the easement of the drain, or the top of the bank of the drain, whichever is greater. Although all structures on the site are at least 45 feet from the top of the bank of the Fellows Creek Drain, the driveway, building, and western sidewalk are less than 25 feet from the Wayne County Drain Easement, which is 80 feet wide. The Wayne County easement is something that is outside of the control of the township, so as creeks grow, as creeks go, it's either going to be the top of the bank, which we know where it is, or the easement itself, which we have to wait from Wayne County to see what easement they either have, or which easement they'll require. In this case, the easement's 80 feet wide, which would make that the measuring distance of having to be 25 from that easement. So again, the applicant will be applying for a variance for those portions of the driveway, building, and western sidewalk that are less than 25 feet from the drainage man. The next topic is landscaping and screening. The landscaping does meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The ground mechanical equipment will be located in the rear of the building and screened it on three sides, and the rooftop mechanical equipment will be concealed by a parapet wall around the building. For the access management, the site plan includes a reciprocal joint access easement on the north side of the parking lot aisle for the potential future access to the site to the north. If the land use is changed in the future for either this site or the site to the north, the joint access will provide for joint parking opportunities if both sites become underparked, or there's a mutual advantage there to having joint access. For the architecture and building design, the plans submitted comply with the zoning ordinance, including showing the required 50% brick and masonry around the building. And the final topic that I want to discuss is the trash removal. In lieu of a dumpster, which is not necessary for a 4,000-square-foot professional office building, the applicant proposes a portable rollaway bin to be stored in the generator room inside the building on the first floor. A sidewalk is proposed from the rear of the building to the front of the building, which will also allow the rollaway bin to be stored in the rear of the building if it's not located inside. So they would have that concealment and the storage in the rear yard if they wanted to store it outside. So in conclusion, our recommendation is to recommend approval of the site plan for the professional and business office building on parcel number 36-01-0016-701, including a 20-foot front yard setback for the parking lot, and a waiver from the loading space requirement subject to ZBA approval of the setbacks from the Fellows Creek Drain Easement pursuant to Section 2.24(c) of the zoning ordinance. That concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a project sponsor or anybody here to talk about this project? Yes, come on up.
The, the engineer who prepared this plan has gone out of country because of the death in the family for condolences. So he asked me, requested me to come here. He's my friend, and I know a little bit of about this project. I worked with him slightly. So whatever presentation we're on, I think it's in confirmation what he had mentioned.
I'm okay with it. Okay. Any questions from the commission? Go ahead, if you look like you're ready to fire.
Just a couple of questions. So I, I noticed on the north side, you, you're staying, future easement for the connection to the parking lot to the north. Has that, has, have they communicated at all to the property owner of the north? Is that something that we could do now?
I mean, that's something they would normally do during engineering. The issue with the north is that's a small insurance office, and they have limited parking too. So at this point in time, I doubt whether or not that office would want to give up two or three parking spaces to make that connection, because then they would be short on parking.
They might gain some too, you know.
So.
In the future, if, this is owned C-2. In the future, something happens and the tenants change, but it still falls onto a C-2 designation like a restaurant, right? A restaurant would be under a C-2?
Right. This is being approved for off, professional office only, as Patrick mentioned. Because of the limitations on parking, it can only be used for professional office, since the building does not have an elevator. It can only be used for professional office. So from a, from a tenant standpoint, when they come in and do a zoning compliance application with us, there'll be restrictions noted in the file on what we can approve at this location.
Is that restriction for the whole entire building, or just, in other words, can the top floor be offices, and the bottom floor be something else?
No, because they can't park it. Because of the parking restrictions, they're limited to professional office only.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
The, speaking of parking, the ADA requirement for this is only one spot for handicap?
Under 25 spaces, I believe it's one space for barrier-free parking.
That's obviously, if they had to come in and, and satisfy a two-space requirement, then they're losing even one more.
Well, the, handicap parking qualifies as required parking. It's in the overall parking count. They don't have to have extra.
Oh, I see, okay.
They don't have to have extra for that, okay.
The, I, I may have missed this. The explanation of the second entry door on the, on the east side? Why, why is there a second? There's two doors on, on that side, on the main side?
On the front.
I think.
Yeah, on the front of the building.
Tenants, two tenants are intended. One is a lower level and one is upper level, and that's why they have separate entrance, I believe.
I see, okay, all right. Let's see, I guess that's pretty much all I had. I'm glad to see that the rooftop units are gonna be concealed. We're using a shoehorn to get this in on this property.
I mean, as you can tell, I mean, we, I mean, they've, they've designed this to minimize the amount of variances and modifications. Otherwise, the county drain basically took 40 feet of their property, so that's why they're applying for a modification to the drain setback. If they were, if the county didn't require such a large drain easement, they would have had an easier time dealing with this. So they've gone back and redesigned this about three times in order to deal with the drainage man.
Yeah, we better hope that drain doesn't overflow too much, huh?
Now, they're, they're way away from it now, so.
All right, anybody else got anything? Well, then somebody should entertain a motion.
I could make a motion. Oh, unless somebody else wants to. Okay.
Don't fight over it.
I don't want to take the whole motion thing. I move to recommend approval of the request for site plan, site plan approval for the Ford Canton Center Office Building on parcel as noted, including a 20-foot front yard setback for the parking lot and a waiver from the loading space requirement. the parking lot and a waiver from the loading space requirement, subject to ZBA approval of the setbacks from the Fellows Creek, Creek, Fellows Creek Drain easement pursuant to section two point two-four C of the zoning ordinance.
We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner...
Atcharia.
Atcharia, okay. I thought it was kind of, yes. Um, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Atcharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and good luck to you. All right.
Don't want this to the engineer you're filling in for.
Yeah, this one won't go to the township board until after ZBA hears it, so the, the ZBA can't, or the board can't approve it until a variance is granted.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Our fifth and last agenda item of the night is the Park Creek of Canton, where we're considering a fa, final site plan approval for property located north of Geddes and west of Beck. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Uh, yes. This is an eighty-nine acre project. You've seen it a couple of times now through preliminary and final PDD, uh, for approximately seventy-five site condominiums and ninety-one detached condominiums, uh, for a total of a hundred and sixty-six units, uh, at Beck and Geddes Road. Uh, project known as Park Creek Condominiums, and Park Creek Reserve, I think, is the detached condominiums under the final site plan. Uh, basically, it'll be a phased project. Uh, the plan shows the two phases on the plans. You just saw this back in May before the board approved the final PDD. So this is the final site plan. It was in pretty good shape, uh, in terms of details at the last time, in terms of landscaping and, and, and details. They're finalizing their engineering plans currently. They should be, uh, completed within the next week before we'd send it to the township board. We're in the process of getting letters of credit. We have the master, draft master deed in hand for the first phase. Um, they're raring to go ahead and start, uh, clearing trees and doing grading and stormwater work so they can get first-phase roads in this fall. So Nikki Jeffries with MI Homes is here, if you have any more questions for her, but basically it's what she saw two months ago. Uh, you know, I'll bring up the plans in case you have any questions, but, uh, but Nikki, why don't you come up to the podium, and if they have any questions, uh, you know, I won't go through the, the entire, uh, plan again.
Thank you, Jeff.
This is the overall, yeah, this is the overall plan. Uh, the phase lines are kind of shown in here, so just to, all of the roadway affrontages, uh, will be done in phase one, along with the park, and portions of each of the products will be done as part of phase one. Okay. Take it away, Nikki.
Uh, good evening. I'm Nikki Jeffries. I'm with MI Homes of Michigan. Um, I know, I know we've, uh, seen each other a lot...
Couple times.
...the last few months. Uh, I think Jeff gave you a pretty good breakdown here. I really don't think, uh, there's really been much change as far as the site plan and the layout and the phasing since we were here a few months ago. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's the same. I, I don't, I don't think I need to go into a lot of detail, uh, because I don't want to repeat myself, but we are, uh, raring to go and get started on construction, as Jeff mentioned. Uh, obviously, this is the, the weather that we, we prefer to be, to do site work, grading, pipe work, et cetera. So we are in really good shape with our, our permitting, uh, financial guarantees we will have this week over to Jeff, so we are, we're definitely getting close to being ready to start grading, and then hopefully, uh, you know, in another, another month, start on our pipe and that kind of stuff. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, but it's really for Jeff, probably. Um, because of the fact that they changed the community benefit from dedicating the park to taking care of the traffic signal, um, arrangement there, when, at, when would that change?
Traffic signals first phase.
First phase?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
That's in the agreement.
I think it's needed, yeah, yeah.
So they've already worked with Wayne County, and they'll have to submit, they'll have to hire a, a traffic company to design the signals to...
Oh, it's, it's all in process. We, we have a, our traffic engineer that did the traffic study, um, is, has already designed the signal, been through multiple revisions with Wayne County, so that will be part of our permit from Wayne County, um, is the signal improvement. So as soon as we get permitted, um, we, we'll start to order the, the traffic signal improvements. Luckily, we're, we're using the existing mast arms because those are a crazy long lead time, so luckily that should, should not affect us.
The one, one change that was made to the site plan on the Beck Road entry, that was changed from a boulevard to a single lane entrance in order for, in order to avoid left-turn locks with the boulevard across the street. We couldn't get the geometry to work without creating the left-turn locks in between, uh, the, you know, the, what will be a center turn lane there on, 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 on Beck Road, so, uh, they agreed to basically reduce that down to a one-lane entrance instead of a boulevard entrance.
But that's also going to have, um, the widened part of the road there for...
Whatever Wayne County requires there. Yeah, I don't, is it a, is it a D cell lane, or is there a center turn lane?
No, we have, uh, XL D cell, but we have, uh, center-left turn lanes going in at both entrances, at both Geddes and Beck. Um, so there'll be widening done for both sides.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I like making motions. Um, I move to recommend final site plan approval of the Park Creek of Canton condominium site plan on the tax parcels as noted, as provided in the plans, subject to obtaining all outside agency permits and submitting the financial securities to the township prior to review by the board of trustees.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Atcharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Finally, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for coming.
Hey, good luck.
All right. Um, we've got, uh, business to refer...
Sorry, you were last, so...
We've got business to refer to staff, uh, the Arbor Glen Project. Um, do I hear a motion to refer that to staff?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have, have a public hearing for September ninth, the Grand View Estate South and the Arbor Glen Final PDD. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I hear a motion, well, anything coming up, Jeff? Anything we need to discuss?
Um, no, you'll, you'll see the Hayden's Building has been stripped and, and, and ready to go, so they're in, in, in process of working on that building, so basically...
Which building?
The old Hayden's Building at Lots and Ford, so the entire exterior's been stripped off. Uh, they finally started work on the Imagine Theater, just as an update, so I think they're working on footers and foundations. They got a little bit slower start than what we expected them to, but they're underway with that currently. Uh, as you can see, we've got a couple of things coming up for September, but, uh, we've got, uh, some new users coming in along Ford Road. Smoothie King may change locations from where we originally approved it. Uh, we've got, uh, a user coming in.
Smoothie King?
Remember, you approved that in the Elite Eye Care. They may not be going there. They may be going someplace else, so, uh, and not a drive-through. Uh, we, we're working with, uh, there's a site plan coming in soon, uh, for something across from Kroger and, and, uh, and Bel Tire. We'll see that soon. We've, so we've got a lot of site plans in process in addition to what's coming up scheduled. I just don't know what the timing will be, but we'll have a busy fall, so...
What happened with the, uh, the old Pizza Hut building? It looked like they had, they had left one, one of the old walls up for the longest time, and then...
The only thing they kept was the foundation. That was the plan all along. The one wall was just holding up meters.
Yeah, it was just...
Okay. All right, 'cause then all of a sudden, that was gone, and they started actually laying the block.
Yeah, they couldn't take that old frame building with the Mansard roof and really retrofit it, so basically, it's a new construction with, you know, steel frame and, and masonry, so...
Okay.
You'll see the DDA walls already going in.
No one wanted their roof.
So, yeah. So essentially, you know, they've already started the DDA wall improvements in front of that, uh, you know, so... But, uh, we'll be seeing, seeing something in, in, at the next meeting with the Meyer Outlet Parcel and the inside of their parking lot, so we've been working with them on that, so you'll see a proposal for that.
App is at the bank, right over there, or...
Yeah, right where the TNT fireworks is.
The fireworks place?
Yeah, so in that corner, you know, in between the two driveways, that'll be a new commercial site.
Who is it?
Uh, Colbers is looking at, at that, so they'll be, be in with a special land use, so they have a relationship with Meyer, but Meyer has to create a private road going through to serve that site, so, because it's, it's all driveways, there's no private road easements in there, so for a parcel to be buildable, okay, and it has to have frontage on a private road, a drive-through restaurant has to have a hundred and twenty foot of frontage on a road, so they need to create a road easement across the driveway that serves the gas station. So basically, they're, you know, they'll, they have to create and record an easement and, and, uh, to provide permanent access to that parcel. So it's a little complicated. It, it's another reduction of Meyer's parking lot, so you'll need to approve, you know, parking lot modification.
And no more fireworks. Darn.
They'll move to the south side of the parking lot next year, so... So we've got a lot of stuff coming in. Uh, it's just a matter of when you'll see it, so...
Yeah, okay. Uh, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.[1782.91]